It's nine o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First item is the consent agenda. Planning, or excuse me, the commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda. We're going to take one public comment. The only thing on the agenda, the consent agenda, is the meeting minutes from last month. So do I have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which is the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six zero. Regular agenda. Subdivision Platts, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, FP twenty-four oh nine, Concho Development Company addition, section three, request for final plat. Concho Development Company addition, section three being five point five one seven acres in the light manufacturing and single-family RS1 zoning districts located at approximately thirty-five ten Cristoval Road.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. This is the Concho Development Company addition, section three. It is a little bit north of the intersection at Chadburn and Cristoval. It is five point five one nine acres and they did request a variance on the paving width and curb and gutter off of Cristoval Road. It is RS1 and light manufacturing. It's in District One, Tommy Hebert Glenmore Neighborhood. This is the plat. This is their concept plan. It is for storage units. They are, they have also applied for a zone change that will be coming next month. So staff is recommending approval of both the plat and the variance requests. It is on the city CIP list, Cristoval Road is, which is why we are recommending approval on the variance of curb and gutter and paving width with six conditions. They have to provide the tax cert, install the necessary water and wastewater service lines, submit the plans for required improvements on Cristoval Road if the variance is not approved, submit a drainage study, and make a note on the plat about the fire hydrant and fire department access, and submit sidewalk plans.
Okay.
With that, is there any questions?
Any questions for the staff? Do you got, do you have a layout that shows the current zoning?
I thought I did. I do not. As I say, right about right here over is light manufacturing and then above is residential.
That little service station or something?
Yeah, so I think it's, I want to say it's like Verizon or something, but it might be a, yes.
And then there's a drainage way right between that and the residential in Crestwood.
So the, okay. So the top third is single-family, the bottom two-thirds is light manufacturing.
Yeah, and then, yeah, you got it. And then as Norwood sweeps down here in the bases here, that's that edge would develop that Concho Valley was doing, so.
And that case will be brought next month.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, thanks Ray. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address or single member district.
Good morning, my name is Blake Wilder with Wild Engineering Surveying here. We just asked you approve it as presented with the request for the street paving width and any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are you working with, I know Tech Dot's about to widen that Cristoval Road and they're going to start work next month, so the curb, the paving and everything on Cristoval Road is going to be delayed for about probably two years. Are you working with Tech Dot on that?
They haven't made any contact with us for any sort of right-of-way acquisition or anything. I believe they have plenty of right-of-way right there actually. Their right-of-way kind of stops just in the middle of the convenience store entrance, so any further past that, they really don't get into it. So we're just out of their reach.
Yeah, the portion that Tech Dot is improving is from Chadburn going south to the Loop. This portion to the north, while they do have some responsibility up to about a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet, the city actually has on their capital improvement program in the future to repave and expand that road in the future. That's why we are supportive of the variance at this time because we are going to be, we're planning on doing that in the future and any improvements now may have to be redone, re-done at that time and we just didn't think that added expense at this time makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thanks Blake.
Thanks.
Ray, can you go to the next slide with the remaining conditions, please?
Does anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion. The only concern I have, I know they've talked about rezoning it, it's pretty close to some existing single-family. Yeah, and the northern portion of this tract is zoned for single-family.
But it's also in a drainage way, like, so in this development?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So there, this could never actually be residential unless you had to build up like about four feet out of that drainage way.
Right.
So, and then you've got all of that landscaping, the mobile home over here.
Well, I would, I would assume if they're going to rezone it, they're going to rezone the entire tract to light manufacturing. And I'd, I'd like to hope that we can maintain some distance from the single-family, not just the roadway, I guess is my thought.
As far as right here?
Yes.
So that drainage way, Blake, correct me if I'm wrong, that drainage easement that goes down there is like, I mean, it's like forty feet. It's pretty big, isn't it? At least it is down further on Norwood.
Before I put it back. Yes.
Go back another.
The, the, yes, that one.
Yeah, you can see from here, I mean, there's, there's an alley and then you have the drainage way and then you've got another even strips. You've got about, you know, a good sixty, eighty feet there and with good transitional, you know, butts up to an alley, so you, you kind of get that all with the alley, the drainage way and all that right there, so.
Okay, all right.
Will there be any kind of fencing along that particular side of the plat?
Well, I'm sure there would be, but I can't speak for the owner, so.
So Candy, under, under the zoning ordinance, there is a buffer between the zones with residential and any commercial or light manufacturing, so there would be at that point at the site plan, there would be required opaque fencing.
All right. Anyone else have thoughts or want to make a motion?
Make a, and Blake, you were fine with the future improvements, correct? Your client was? I think it was item number three.
Sorry, I'm going to open up public comment.
We requested a variance from the street improvements because of the capo improvements deal that the city supported here, so.
I'm sorry?
We requested a variance from the street improvements, right.
I believe that's what the slide said, correct? Okay, okay. On that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, I'm going to close public comment. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six zero. Item two, FP twenty-four dash ten, Sparks Estates, section one, request to final plat, Sparks Estates, section one, in the Ranch and Estate zoning district located at approximately forty-five twenty-nine Ransom Road. A request for paving width variance to maintain the thirty foot of paving, paving, thirty feet of paving instead of a forty-foot width with the applicant's responsibility being the incremental half of ten feet additional paving.
So the agenda is incorrect, just throwing that out there at the moment. The paving width is really twenty feet, not thirty.
Twenty feet?
Yes.
Okay, so to read this in, the existing paving is twenty feet, not thirty feet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ray Limeberry Planner, this is the Sparks Estate, section one. It is two point nine five eight acres and they did request a variance for the paving width on Ransom Road. It is Ranch and Estate and it is in District Two, Tom Thompson Riverside Neighborhood. This is the plat. So I zoomed in here because if you notice, one of the conditions that staff is asking for is to resubmit the plat with that curve. It is not showing the curve and this extra right-of-way. If you notice, it just has it straight down. So that is one of the conditions that staff is asking for.
Is that additional land owned by?
The city.
The city, okay.
So with that, staff is recommending approval of the plat and the city engineer is okay with the twenty-foot pavement. So staff is recommending approval on the variance for the paving width also with the six conditions, the providing the tax cert, updating the plat showing that curve, install necessary water and wastewater service lines. If the variance is not approved, then to submit plans for the required improvements on Ransom Road, submit a drainage study, and to note on the plat that the fire hydrant and fire department access may be required. That, is there any questions?
Everything up there is septic, is it?
I believe septic actually ends right above this, or the city ends right above this property.
All right, anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Blake Wilder here with Wild Engineering Surveying. So, yeah, we asked for the variance for the paving width, obviously, and I wouldn't like to go back to your note about showing this curve. We could pull up an ownership map, please. The ownership map, not this. Your ownership map. So y'all can't pull that up on the computer right now?
No, we don't have access to our maps, our mapping system.
Well, then go back to the plat drawing if you don't mind, please. I mean, everything here showing is actual deed references. The, the curve actually starts about a hundred and fifteen feet east of here. That's why it's not shown. If you just want me to zoom out a little bit, that's fine, I can do that on the drawing. But the curve is showing all the right-of-ways shown there correctly, so that's just a clerical error. That's fine, we can handle it, otherwise I don't have any comments.
So Lot One, or the top lot, North Lot, that's where the current residence is located?
Right, on the top is the current residence, yes. Yeah, like, the sewer just stops right at the top of this place, so it's got sewer and water and everything, so.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Blake? Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. I do have a question for the staff. The, the road width is twenty feet. The engineers have said that it's okay to grant the variance for the paving width. Could you guys provide a little bit of, a little bit more background on that process?
I'm going to ask Kevin, the city engineer, to come forward. Kevin?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff Pate, city engineer.
Are there some questions? Yes, sir. My question was that the, the current road width is twenty feet and that you guys have indicated that you're okay with twenty feet. In prior discussions, it seems like twenty, twenty-five feet was the, was the minimum road width in some of our prior cases, twenty-six feet, I'm getting a motion from. And I'm wondering if that's changed or how this might be different.
Before recommending this variance, I checked with the Fire Marshal's office.
Yes, sir.
Who told, told me that twenty feet is their minimum requirement.
Okay.
Per their codes.
Okay.
To provide, you know, safety. So after having done that, you look at the administrative variance process for paving.
Yes, sir.
Structures in the ordinance, and this meets most of those criteria except for the twenty-six foot minimum. So I can't administratively vary that width. That's why it's in front of you to make that recommendation or nothing.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the help.
You bet.
All right. Anyone have questions or want to make a motion?
Okay, so as far as what Blake had mentioned about being able to zoom out, it was more administrative. How does staff take that?
It's within our subdivision ordinance really actually to have the nearest intersections represented. And all we're asking is just to show what that distance is between the pavement and the, the actual property line. It's just, it's not a full resubmission, but I mean, it's just a, like he said, a clerical error, just a, a simple redraw when he submits it for filing.
I mean, yeah, I guess Blake seemed to not think it was a big deal.
I move to approve as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six zero. All right, Brittany's going to step out and recuse herself from this one. FP twenty-four eleven, The Enclave at Twin Oaks Edition, section three, a request to final plat, The Enclave at Twin Oaks Edition, section three, being seven point one three three acres in the single-family zoning district located at approximately the five thousand block of Royal Oak between Canyon Rim Drive and Coral Way.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. So this comes out of the Bonham Neighborhood in District Six. This is RS1 zoning, so what we're doing is creating thirty-six new residential lots over seven acres. Here is that plat. You can see we're connecting Royal Oak Drive all the way through east to west as well as Coral Way up there to the north. Royal Oak Drive is a minor collector up to about right there and from there on eastward. It's actually just a local road and those are reflected in the right-of-ways. The lots all slightly varying in size, but they, I think they average at somewhere around six thousand square feet. We are recommending approval subject to five conditions, that they provide the tax certificate, submit plans for the required street construction of Royal Oak Drive as a local roadway where it is a local roadway, submit plans for the required street construction of Royal Oak Drive and Coral Way as minor collectors where they are minor collectors, that they install necessary water and wastewater, and that they submit a drainage study. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Five zero. Item four, RP twenty-four oh three, first replat, Avondale Edition, Block Six. A request to replat Avondale Edition, Block Six, lots thirty through thirty-three in the two-family RS2 zoning district located at approximately sixteen twenty-eight and sixteen forty Beacon Street. A request for a variance from paving width on Beacon Street, a request for variance on Marie Street for paving width, and a request for a variance on Marie Street for no curb and gutter.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. This is a smaller replat coming out of the Pauline Neighborhood in District Four. This is RS2 zoning. We're turning four skinny lots into two lots, four duplexes. We did have three variance requests. I will say two of them were granted administratively for the paving width on both North Marie and Beacon. They are at a current paving width of thirty. We do however have a variance request today for you for no curb and gutter along North Marie Street. Here's that replat. Both of these lots are fifty-two by one thirty. There's nothing too crazy here. We are recommending approval of the replat and approval of the variance requests, subject to two conditions, that they provide a tax certificate and that they either submit plans for the construction of curb and gutter on North Marie or get the variance for it. We do have one note that the, or on where it says Maria Avenue on the plat should actually just be North Marie Street. And if you have any questions?
Okay, so the variance for curb and gutter was only on Marie, not Beacon?
Correct.
And why is it not on Beacon?
I believe it already has curbing.
Okay, so they're going to curb Beacon, but they don't want to curb Marie?
Beacon Street already has curb and gutter and the Marie Street does not. The reason we're supportive of the variance today is that these are actually two built-out lots. They were built out with duplexes, with the property lines between the duplexes. Now they're just removing those property lines. And so therefore, this is kind of a replat for this property, but there's no improvements being proposed on the land itself. So we are supportive of that.
Okay.
Curb and gutter not being required at this time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have questions for Austin? Thank you. Open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Blake Wilder with Wild Engineering Surveying here. Just as requested, we request a variance from the paving width on Beacon and Marie, and then also a request for the variance for the curb and gutter on Marie Street. And just, any questions? It's mainly just kind of a clerical thing for mortgage lenders. They don't like to have a line going between a roof structure, so they're removing it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion or questions.
I'll motion, Chair, for the next?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Six zero. Rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Item one, PD twenty-four oh one, forty-two fifteen Armstrong, a request for a rezoning from single-family residential RS1 to a planned development PD district with an underlying base of low-rise multifamily for a transitional housing facility for women.
Thank you. This request comes out of the Lakeview Neighborhood in District Two. As mentioned, we are looking to rezone here from RS1 to a planned development district for one acre, one one point three acres lot, excuse me. We are looking for a base zoning of RM1 here for a transitional housing facility for women. You can see our zoning on the left there. You see everything west of Armstrong is RS1, everything to the east of Armstrong is Ranch and Estate, and then we have some photos of the front of the property there. We did mail out twenty-one notifications. They did not make them into this slide, but we did receive one response, one mailed response in favor that I've given you. We did also receive one sort of verbal understanding from a neighbor and I think we have some surrounding homeowners here today. We think that this is compatible with the surrounding area and staff's opinion, it can kind of help to provide a buffer between all of that RS1 and Armstrong Street, which is a major arterial. We do also think there's been a demonstrated community need for a transitional housing facility for women. And finally, this building has changed hands several times over the past few years, so we think that placing a planned development district over it would kind of help to maintain some consistency. With that, we are recommending approval subject to four conditions, that they obtain and comply with all necessary building permits and get their change of occupancy, that no services are performed on-site, and we kind of define those as no alcohol or drug rehabilitation or mental health services. The idea is that these are being provided somewhere else. All new sight lighting shall be shielded away from residential properties and that they provide and maintain their appropriate parking. With that, if you have any questions?
Austin, it looks like this structure's been there for a little bit. Do you know about when these improvements were originally constructed?
Off the top of my head, no. I know, this is a building that had burned down quite a few years ago. It's half of pretty much what it used to be and it's changed hands recently again.
Okay.
As to when it was originally constructed, I'm not sure.
Okay. And do you guys know of any of the prior uses of these improvements in its history?
Yeah, I believe it was when it burned down, it was a nursing home, I think. And after that, the past few years, it had been some form of rehabilitation or transitional housing, but the last owner was not permitted with us at all, so.
I think they were doing transitioning in or something, or maybe somebody was living there when it burned.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak, please state your name, an address, or single member district.
Chairman, do you want to hear from the applicant first or do you want to hear from citizens first or both? Or does it matter to you?
I don't think it matters to me. Does it matter to y'all?
Okay, thank you, sir. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, I'm Selena Dingus. I live at forty-two twenty-six Armstrong Street. I do have a couple of the opposing. We are concerned about this building because it has been a problem.
Yes, ma'am.
For many, 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 many years. I lived directly across the street and twenty years ago, they tried to change the zone to a rehab or halfway house or something. And I was a single mom at the time. My children were little. Now she is at home right next door to me with little children and her husband works out of town. The other lady on the other side of me, her husband, they have a business out of town, so he's always out of town. So us three across the street from that place are vulnerable.
Okay.
So we're very, you know, particular about who is in that place.
Sure.
It's burned from squatters. The nursing home closed before I even moved there. That was twenty years ago. Then it, somebody bought it and there was riffraff in and out, drug dealing. The neighbor next to it found drugs in their yard from people throwing it over their fence. So, you know, it's kind of, I don't know, difficult, I guess, because it does seem like this place would be good and stable and keep the other riffraff out. But then again, who's to say? Is it going to stay for women? Are they going to change it to men later? Are they going to be there in a year and open it up to somebody else to come in and try and put another kind of rehab place in there? There's a school right down the road. Those are all the concerns that we're having. We do have petitions also. Who do I give this to?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I guess that's really all that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Alondra Castro and I'm living on the forty-three oh two Armstrong. As she said, I'm living there for nine years and that place is always having problems. Is, I never go there, but I already have the DEA parking in my driveway to check that place. That is not feel comfortable at all because we were thinking that somebody was helping some people there, but we never know. My concern is because the company is already there, they are saying they are trying to help women, but they are offering rehab for other kind of people. And we have a school really close, so we do not need that concern anymore in that street. My husband is working out of the town most of the days, I want to say five days a week. So I am by myself with three children. And the other neighbor on the forty-three twelve, she's an old lady and she's taking care of the grandkids. She's not living there, but she has to stay a long part of the day in there. So she's really concerned. She's not able to come today, but she's not, she's not happy with that because that building is always having issues.
Yes, ma'am.
It was in fire. We don't even know, but the, the reason why, we were thinking they were doing something good, something great, and I have the DEA in my driveway, it concerns me a lot.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, does anyone else wish to speak on this case?
Good morning. My name is Maria Mejia, Executive Director to Contra Valley Turning Point. All valid concerns. So to let you know, Contra Valley Turning Point's been around since 1994. We started off as a part of Rest Street Ministries. And then after coming in, working with them, trying to fulfill the needs of the community, we breached, we actually partnered off, did our own 501(c)(3) and started a men's transitional housing that has been around since 2009. We are on Highland Boulevard. We pride ourselves, our ministry has a very good reputation. We work with a lot of agencies in town. We, it has been a vision and a dream to be able to open a women's home. It's also been something that's been approached to us over and over by different agencies we work with. So this would be a women's transitional housing. Not everybody that comes there would be on, coming in from, some will be domestic violence. My third application was actually a high school student from Lakeview that is 18 years old and looking. She is couch surfing. So not everybody is coming from a background of that type of dysfunction. But our vision is to go ahead and provide housing as we also work with Housing Authority, temporary housing, get them out from the emergency base and put them into a set that would be long-term. We do not provide any type of services there. We have a main hub on 528, but we also refer, we work with individuals. We work with ADAC. We work with Children's Advocacy Center, with the Rape Crisis Center. And we let the professionals do what they do. We don't do them in-home. If any clients are getting help from any of those agencies, they do not get them in at the place. We have just been there since March. The owner of the property, Ms. Kukuzi, is here with us. She, I think, bought it in 2018, so some of the questions about transferring ownership, she could answer a little bit more of that. And then, what else? It is, it will be women's home. We have entered into a contract for rental. Until we find out how this is working, we did sign a one-year agreement. Like I said, for the past 10 years, we've been dealing with men and, you know, reunifying them with their families and stuff. So we're on a trial basis, see how we do. The location fit perfect. It was transitional housing. It's been transitional housing for a lot of different agencies. They just didn't do it like we do. We prefer to go in front of the city, and we're upfront about what we do. We're not gonna say we do this when we don't. We're upfront about what we do. We want to make sure that the neighbors know what we're doing there as well.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. The, there was mention of a fire. Can you, can you just kind of speak to what the existing improvements look like? How many, how many rooms?
It's beautiful. So right now, what we've rented is, we have use of the front, the front office and the left wing. The left wing has five bedrooms.
Okay.
We will be there tomorrow at 12:30 as well. I know with the timing, it was supposed to be last week, because, last Monday. But because of the lunar, or the eclipse, they switched it. We have the support from United Way, who's helped us do the housing, I mean, do the beds, do the furnishings and all of that. So it is open. We invite our neighbors at any time to come look. You know, we were gonna go around and do all that. We just wanted to make sure that we did this first before we go introduce ourselves to the neighbors. But our, all our information's on the internet. So like I said, we have a library.
Okay.
The office use is we, you know, work with them if they're needing to get information, make appointments, we do that. We work with ASU. We have two ASU interns, social work interns. So what they'll do is help them find out like what time services are, and then direct them where they would go for those services. We are partnering with Howard College. We've been partners with Howard College. So this is just a different branch, because we're way over here, not by the workforce or other locations on Highland.
Right.
So trying to get them GED and higher education of, you know, a woman comes to us and she is fleeing an abusive relationship from, you know, we're trying to help her get education so that she can become self-sufficient. Not just now, but in the long term, to help keep, you know, keep her off benefits, do all that and stuff. And become self-sufficient, yeah. We are faith-based, not religion-based, so we try to plug them up with churches and other mentors and stuff.
Go ahead, Brittany.
How many rooms total? I'm so sorry. I heard five, but the grand plan, how many rooms?
Correct. So right now, there's five bedrooms in use. We only put two per bedroom, except for one room, which is smaller, so we only put one. So if approved at this moment, we would open up with the max of nine women. After that, there are eight bedrooms on the right. We, after the trial of all that goes through, as explained in here, we plan to open that and then also do figure out we're gonna do one or two if it's a college student, high school student. And it's only women. We, although we strive to reunify with their children, it's women only who are going. That's where we work with HUD Housing and work with Housing Authority and stuff, yeah.
Very good.
So just life skills and stuff like that, so yeah.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
You may not be able to answer this, and I certainly understand if you can't. But the, the concern regarding the DEA and that kind of thing, are you, I'm assuming that you have a point of contact for that? Is there?
I do. I'm DOD service as well. So that is something that I will go back. And I can't account for, for anything that's happened in the past.
Sure, of course.
When we prayed over a location, that was one of the concerns that we had, which is the same thing with our Highland.
Sure.
The apartment complex that Turning Point purchased was a very highly drug-populated. It's, I mean, it was very. So when we went to our neighbors, they're like, well, it kind of doesn't, you know, you're doing transitional housing for people. But it's, it's beautiful. It's worked great. We were able to, you know, do, take the drugs out of that neighborhood. If DEA, that has to be before us. We've only been there, we rented it, and we actually spent a lot of time. We have the people from the church, United Way, and then come and decorate and, you know, name our rooms are Faith, Hope, Love, Joy, Peace. We have a knowledge room so that they can do GED and higher education. I will check on that. I did take a note, because I will find out. And we'll know. We have very good communication with the Drug Task Force and all of that as well, too. Because our, that's one of our goals, is to make sure that our neighbors are safe. We pride ourselves on being very good stewards on our surrounding. Our other location is Maya School as well for Concho. And we've not ever had, actually, for Concho does a project with our ministry, too. So we work well with House of Faith, Judge Daniels. It was totally prior, yeah, but I am gonna check on it.
Thank you so much.
For sure.
Appreciate you.
Any other questions?
Do you have staff there 24/7?
We do not, because it's transitional housing. It's not, it's the last phase. So we would have, the staff is from where, maybe where they came from and stuff. People living normal lives, you know, going into the last part, the next part. That's why we don't say halfway house. They're way past that. They're going into, just looking for affordable housing, somewhere where they can work a job and live. And that's why we work with Galilee as well as HUD, to get them into a home that is safe and try to take down the homelessness rate as well. We, we do not. It's their private home of residence. Like-minded people trying to live, you know, going to the next step. Good question. We've been asked that. We do not.
And that's very common for transitional housing.
Correct.
Facilities.
Yeah, it's not. I will tell you that my cell phone number's on my cards. We have our board, I actually have a board member here, and then an intern from ASU, and then the assistant director, too. We are very good about putting our numbers out there. If there's an issue, we'll, we'll go, you know, we'll go talk and stuff. We haven't, we, our intention is, as its name, is safe haven for them to go to the next step. As long as they are fit for us, and we are fit for them. So as long as they're showing growth. And our men's, we had a question from, from one of the foundations that we applied for a grant. He's been there seven years. You know, people, you know, did the whole IRL, did all of that. They just did it at, when I spoke at Howard. So individuals come to us with different, you know, different backgrounds. In those seven years, he owed $50-something thousand of child support. In seven years, we celebrated, he's in the single digits. He's worked, he's actually has custody of his children. The apartments are different. They're individual. So he has custody of his son, raising his son and paying child support. So we, even though we've been doing it with, you know, with men, we've been asked over and over, you know, when are you gonna open a women's? When are you gonna open a women's? And so we just feel like this, this was our time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, an opportunity came, and we do want to open. Although the location may not have the best reputation, we feel with Christ and with everybody that we have that it will turn into a good, and, yeah.
For the purposes, I'm sure you know this number, too, but just for the purposes of understanding transitional housing for this group, can you, can you kind of convey another issue that I understand the Contra Valley is? Affordable housing and rent. And I understand most agencies in this community are already out of assistance, as well as the number waiting for HUD Housing is astronomical.
Correct.
So when it comes to that waitlist, I would assume they can, they're part of, they can remain in transitional housing until something is available for them to move in. Is that correct?
It is correct, yes. And our intention is to be able to provide that. And just for the time needed, as we can get them to other services. You know, as you'll see, Galilee got, you know, funding for, for that one particular population is, you know, kids coming out of foster care or coming out of, you know, graduating high school, you know, couch surfing, so they weren't really considered homeless. So now that Galilee has that, that'll be another avenue that we can have to transition them from where they're at while they're on the waiting list to go to the next. Yes, you're welcome, Michelle.
Okay, last question for me. There's been some concern from some of the neighbors.
Yes, sir.
I think you'd mentioned early that you hadn't had a chance to go out and visit with them.
Correct.
Are you a point of contact for the organization?
I am.
Okay.
I am, and so are board members or board members, yes. But I am the point of contact as well.
Okay.
I mean, main point of contact, yeah.
So if they have questions or concerns, they could, they could maybe visit with you about?
Not maybe, they can for sure, yeah.
Okay.
And they can come over today. I will open up the doors and stuff. We are very open-door policy. We just do not like people to go on the property, especially, this is different. This is women. So we will make sure that myself and another individual is there while they... Tomorrow, we do have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. So at 12:30, so all the public's, you know, welcome to come.
Yes, ma'am.
We did do a, back in March, we did a interview with Sonora Scott, inviting the public to come out and to see, before we even moved anybody in, to come in and see, talk to us about what we were doing, and to see how it's changed. I mean, I've gotten comments, you know, what, you know, decorating company did you? It was all women from church, different women, different women that have been in the same situation in the past that came in and helped decorate. And make it, it's beautiful.
Okay.
Very beautiful.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Anyone else have questions?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Is your question for me?
Well, no.
Okay, never mind.
I'm gonna let you come back if you'll, give me just one second. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jane Kukuzi, and my husband and I are the owners of the property.
Yes, ma'am.
And my husband did purchase a severely depressing, depressed, distressed building in October of 2018. There was a history of a fire, and the previous owners had knocked down the fire-damaged part of the building.
Okay.
So, so the building had extended further north.
Okay.
So that part had been knocked down. So the remaining building was structurally sound. However, it needed extensive, extensive new sewer, new, new lines, new electrical.
Everything.
Everything. Inside was redone. Our money ran out. We did the south wing, and that's, Maria has turned it into some lovely, lovely bedrooms. And then we have the middle section was done. But the north end, with the additional eight bedrooms, is structurally sound, new roof, brick siding. It's a beautiful old building, but it's just un-
Unfinished.
Unfinished inside.
Okay.
We've had, we've rented it. It took a whole year to get it, that part fixed up enough to rent it. We've had trouble with the first two renters we've had, but we just really think that this would be good. We think Concho Valley, Turning Point would be good residence, and it would be a good use for the community. So we hope you approve it.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions about the building or the, I have before and after pictures, whatever you guys need.
No, that's perfect.
Bless me. Terrible, too.
And I completely understand taking a distressed property and trying to do something good for the neighborhood. Can you speak to the DEA questions by chance? Maybe that was with a past tenant. One of the, one of the neighbors was asking about the DEA. Sorry, am I echoing?
No, no, it's just hard to find.
One of the neighbors was inquiring about the DEA and some drug issues and whatnot in the past, since you're the point of contact. Okay, so it was related to that.
I think we're happy to turn it over to a legitimate, kind organization where we would, those concerns, and I appreciate those concerns.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You had, please come up. If you don't mind stating your name again, please.
Selena Dingus. We were wondering, okay, if this passed?
Yes, ma'am.
And it doesn't work out for them after their lease is up, what happens then? Is it able to be re-leased to another facility like that, or?
It's a good question.
That's, you know, and then who knows who's gonna move in there, you know?
So the underlying use of the property is, would be multifamily when it's currently single-family. I'm assuming that multifamily is needed for the, the use that's proposed.
Correct. Under single-family, you can only have up to four unrelated adults living on a property. And so you have to have something that's going to allow more than that in a household-living situation.
Okay.
Our Assistant Director and Building Official Charlie Kemp did mention to me that in 2019, it was, has a certificate of occupancy as a residence, and with that north wing being storage, they would have to get a change of occupancy to become a commercial property, and there may be some requirements that come to that. But that also involves building permits inspection, as well as fire marshal inspection. As you start having more and more folks live in a facility, even if it's just the nine members, you want them to be safe.
Yes.
And so being that as part of the condition of the planned development, we want to make sure that that's maintained, because that is required by the, by the building code. The other items for safety for the citizens, there is always that concern about putting up, whether it's privacy fences along the sides. Obviously, their, their east and west are bound by roads, so that's a little bit more difficult.
Yep.
I do think they, the applicant does have a desire to engage with the community, and I encourage that strongly. But as y'all all know, land use being a planned development that goes with the property. And so the young lady's question there at the end is, what happens if this doesn't work out? What's the next step? And so in our planned development, we need to put whatever protections we think are appropriate that are a, a, that will blend this with the neighborhood, that protects the neighborhood surrounding them.
Okay. Does that help answer your question?
So this isn't gonna be a commercial, though, right? It's just multifamily?
That is correct, ma'am. That's why we're sticking with the, what we call low-rise multifamily, so it's not an actual commercial venture.
Okay. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take thoughts or emotion from my colleagues here.
You mentioned protection. What are your thoughts on how we could protect it so in the event that it wasn't something that they wanted to continue? What could we put on this to protect, anything, or once it's done, it's done?
Well, I think limiting the, the, the underlying zoning to something that could only be used as a residential type in the future. So if, if this agency is not, if it doesn't work out for whatever the reasons are, we, we certainly hope it does, because we know we have a community need. But it's something that allows it to strictly go back to residential. Now, it sounds like in the past, there's maybe been some challenges with that by itself. And then that comes down to enforcement issues of how do we, as a community, enforce those issues and deal with things. So I, I think we've done our, our best that we can think of at this time and date. I, I hesitate recommending, oh, we'll give them three years and see if it works out, because then in three years, somebody has to remember to re-up that. And I don't want them to fall out of compliance, because they forgot or we forgot. I'm not a big fan of limiting service hours, because this is a residence, and so they're really not providing services there. They're allowing folks to have a transitional housing. So I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to figure out what those other protections would be that we could dictate through the ordinance.
So this is a planned development for low-rise multifamily for transitional housing facility for women, correct?
That is correct, and that was what it was-
So they can't move men in there, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I mean, i- i- if there was another organization that took it over, they would only be able to do women's transitional housing, correct?
That is correct.
No services.
And, and no services, and that, that was a concern for the, for the, us trying to protect the neighborhood.
Very limiting.
That is correct.
It's very limiting. Okay.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that, 'cause you can't just move just anybody in there and do anything with it.
Correct.
I'll make a move to accept as presented with stipulation for transitional housing facility for women.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, based on the staff's recommendations, and also to clarify that this is transitional housing for women, um, under the planned development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a six-zero. Thank you and good luck. Uh, next item is, uh, Z2410 CBD expansion. Discussion and action on the request to expand the central business district zoning to the area bound by Emmerich on the east, Pulliam, and East Third Streets on the north, North Oak Street on the west, and East Tuig on the south.
Good morning, uh, planning commissioners, Sherri Bailey, principal planners. Last month, we did, uh, let, make you aware of the fact that we were looking at extending the central business district into this area. Since that time, we have sent out notices to the property owners that are affected, and then people within 200 feet. Last Thursday, we did have a open meeting at the library. We had, I figured we were going to have about eight to 10 people, we ended up having a little over 30, and it lasted-
Wonderful.
It was wonderful, by the way. Uh, it lasted for about an hour and a half, there were a lot of good questions. Over the space of time since last month, we've probably talked to, my list says about 28 people, then we had that open meeting. In that whole space of time, I have two people that oppose it in writing. I have one person that opposed it just on the fact that he doesn't believe government should be in, in anybody's business. And I had people at the meeting who said, "It sounds okay, we'll wait and see, we're, we're kind of skeptical," um, because they feel like they're maybe putting some words in their mouth, and I don't mean to, but they've been kind of the forgotten area. And so they didn't have a problem with the zoning that's being proposed, they just wanted to see how it was going to turn out. They liked the idea of the mixed use, and that's really strongly what we're proposing, as you're well aware, the central business district does allow the commercial and the residential essentially in the same area, and they companion for each other. So with that, we sent out 137 notices. We've probably talked to, in one way or another, over about half of those people. Um, and it was really interesting, uh, discussions that we've had all the way around. The overall notification, uh, that we can do about this area plus the other areas that we talked to you about, eventually will touch about 378 people when we move across the river, we, if we go north along the railroad tracks. So because this is, obviously, this was done before we had the meeting last Thursday, and I didn't have a chance to update the, uh, slide, but I, I really was surprised and really pleased by the library open meeting. It went, went really well. Overall, as I said, I think everyone is in general support, and, and also watching to see how it, how it develops and what happens. So in looking at the rationale, staff does believe that the extension makes sense according to the comprehensive plan. It was all, always part of the 2008 Vision Plan, and so with that, we're believing that what we're doing is just following our, the plans for the city. Staff also believes it's consistent with the zoning ordinance, it's worked well in the existing central business district, where we have residential and commercial living and supporting each other. And over the past 50 to 70 years, this whole area has evolved into a downtown service area, and we'd like to bring that into the fold for the CBD. The constraints, compactness of this area is a good match for the central business district definition. And staff therefore recommends the approval of a request to rezone from the single-family residential, general commercial, general commercial, heavy commercial, office commercial, low-rise multifamily to central business district for the area bound by Emmerich Street on the east, Pulliam, and Third Street on the north, North Oak Street on the west, and East Tuig, Tuig Street on the south to central business district. And with that, are there any questions?
I have a question or two.
Okay.
The, um, looking at the existing zoning classifications, um, are there, are there any circumstances where there is a reduction in the ability to develop any of these tracks based on the change of zoning?
I don't believe so. What we did was, we walked a lot of the area, we talked a lot to the, what I would consider the borderline uses now, those uses would, would come in as they are. What I would like to do is, we're developing the ordinance before we take it to city council, if you, uh, recommend approval, is that we identify those areas and identify by legal description those properties, so that that, in future, when any planner looks back at it, they have a place to look at.
Yes.
One of the problems we've had in the past, when there's been a large hotel zoning change, is that we didn't have it nailed down. And so being able to do that is something that I think will really help. Uh, I've talked to a lot of the owners that I consider, uh, close to the border or just over the border, um, and talked to them about what it's going to mean to them, what they come in as, and generally, I've got the feeling that they were supportive of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for the staff?
So if I have a lot that is, um, let's see, general commercial, heavy commercial today, and it's listed as such, and you, we go to CBD, is that lot still heavy commercial? Or can you make it not heavy commercial under CBD?
It's going to be CBD, or central business district.
Right.
But all of the uses that are existing now that we identified are uses that in fact would be allowed in the central business district, and are allowed in the central business district. Even the service areas, and I can give you a good example, uh, the service area for the mi- uh, motorcycle repair, that's an allowed use, that kind of repair. What he does is he stores old ones and throws them into the ravine in the back, and we talked about that. Uh, that would be one, he would come in as it is, if he wanted to expand that use. Then he would have to, uh, come in like anybody else for, uh, conditional use to expand that use. But as he is now, he's fine, he will be fine. And he'll be identified in the ordinance.
What protects an RS1? So if I'm an RS, so now I'm a CBD, which has all these multiple uses, uh, do you, and now I've got a residential lot, can I come in and apply for a heavy commercial on that residential lot? Or, or they protect it, since everything is under one umbrella?
Not heavy commercial, no, but central business district, anything that functions in that. We have that situation now, in that area. We have a, a large area that has residential right next to commercial, right next to some of what I consider the border, heavy commercial, and it's working now. So that's not really a change in that whole, uh, basic neighborhood on what's existing, and has developed over a number of years. It's just kind of melded together, it just did it without any real thought to it, I think.
I'm trying to reflect back to the first time we did the CBD, and I remember Hartman was one of the items. So for instance, the motorcycle repair, if his building or exterior structure burnt down, what is the, what can he do as far as rebuild?
He, he could rebuild without any problem.
Okay. 'Cause I feel like when, and again, this was so long ago, but when we originally did the CBD, and we went up to Fourth Street, and, you know, we had Hartman, we had Palmer's and all of that, I felt like there was something to do with exterior storage that wasn't allowed.
There, there is, and I think they were mainly concerned, number one, 'cause they're more of an industrial use than a, a heavy commercial use even. But yes, there was some concern about what I was talking about, I think, that this is what I've got, and this means that I can't do this if I burn down in the future. No, that's why we want to identify those areas and identify the c- condition now that they have, so that we can establish that in, as part of the ordinance. Somebody new coming in, they're going to be up against all of the requirements in the central business district. But a central business district does allow some outside storage. It doesn't absolutely not allow it.
Okay.
But that would not be the norm for something really, a heavy commercial to, want to come in.
Thanks, Sherri.
Okay, any other questions for the staff? I'm gonna open it up for public comment then. Thank you, Sherri. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please state your name and address or single member district.
Hi, my name's Linda Landers, and we have a small business on 102 North Bain. Some of you may know it, it's Twisted Ice. And I think I have a couple of concerns, not only for us and how this will kind of play out for our little business, but mostly for our neighbors who are single homeowner families, or people who are in smaller houses and things around, that we're concerned about how this plays out for them. And I feel like because we've become a part of the neighborhood, we really wanna protect our neighbors and-
Sure.
-what kind of impact it will have on them and, for the future. And many of them are, some are aging, some are, there's a few young families too that have gotten in this neighborhood, because it's affordable housing, and their concerns are about what the future looks like, what their taxes are gonna look like if they're adopted into the CBD. And, um, for us, we've been there since 2013, so we're kind of looking at how this would affect our little business, 'cause we're basically no one, as far as, you know, the community, and we're watching Shannon grow, and are they gonna be taking over more, more space in our little area and how that looks? So we, I just wanted to state it as, you know, we have a lot of questions, more than, um, answers at this point, and we're trying to get more informed on exactly how this is gonna look, so.
Uh, I think I can answer this in kind of a broader sense. Single-family residential would be at the, what I would consider the lower end of development intensity, uh, that would be allowed in the CBD zoning district. But generally speaking, the CBD zoning district allows a, a very broad range of uses. And its intent is to encourage the redevelopment of some of these older structures in downtown that have a lot of different, uh, avenues and ideas that, that could be implemented. Um, what's, what, what I think we're moving away from when we go to CBD zoning is, uh, the more intense industrial manufacturing type uses. And I think the, the idea is that those uses, um, might be better suited in, um, more rural locations, uh, not, not as close and proximal to housing.
Right.
And so some of the zoning designations like CGCH have, uh, uses that are, uh, probably not good to have around houses.
Right.
Uh, and so having CBD zoning would reduce the, the, the likelihood of that occurring. Uh, it would, it wouldn't allow some of those intense uses. The other thing that CBD zoning does is that it takes a, a lot of the parking requirements in other zoning districts within our community, and significantly reduces those requirements. So there are a lot of tracts of land downtown that don't have adequate parking for the improvements that they've got.
That's underscored, most of them don't.
And while parking is important and necessary, uh, it may not be, uh, it may not be the property owner that's redeveloping his, his site that's providing the parking for that use. And so CBD zoning allows some flexibility to, to not have such stringent parking requirements, uh, on redevelopment. So, um, your last, your last concern about property values, uh, Shannon's not included in the CBD, are they, or are they?
Shannon is not, but what is important to know is that in, even under the CBD, if Shannon wanted to move into an area, they are required to get a conditional use permit. So that would be notification to surrounding property owners, taking that input, and they are, cannot even under CBD, be able to purchase something and just move in right away. There would be avenues. The other second point that I'd like to add is, since it's a mixed-use area, my hope is that we would have some, like, small office that would move into a residential structure that wouldn't change the nature of the residential structure exterior, on the exterior, but would provide a small office for somebody who's looking for an affordable office site. That happens quite often in, uh, CBD in a, a transitional area like this.
Very good.
Does that help?
Yes, I think so. I think it just being, uh, my, my basic point was, I would like to just make sure that our, our, the homeowners in the area are protected against-
Sure.
-encroachment or a lot of extra things that, new requirements for them, and, um, mostly, I'm, I just wanted to state that, just to protect their rights as homeowners and their neighborhoods. They wanna see improvement, everybody does, but we don't wanna do it at the detriment of those who already own it, and many of them don't have a lot of resources, so they're just trying to maintain what they have, so I just wanted to speak on their behalf, but thank you.
Thank you for doing that. All right, anyone else wish to speak? Good morning.
Hi, uh, good morning. I'm Liz Landers, and, um, you will find me at Twisted Ice many days. I also have some concerns too, because it is, you know, a family business, and, um, we love it, we wanna make sure that they can maintain or change their business if they need to, with, without undue restrictions. The other thing is that we have, um, families that lives in the area that are elderly and cannot come here to speak, and so I am concerned. I've lived in areas where small business, you know, attorney's office, doctor's offices, well, not doctor's offices, 'cause we know who's across the street, but, um, there are a, there is a lot of property available that could be used and is not being used or not being utilized in the best way, probably. utilized in the best way probably. But we are really concerned that instead of people being able to live in their houses, they're going to be surrounded by, even if it's small, and we know that Shannon has made offers on some houses on Pryser, who by the way is my great-great-great-grandfather. You can see him in your wall of Mayors downstairs, who was the first one. So it also gives my family an interest in what goes on and trying to do the best thing for that little neighborhood, because it is pretty sweet and there's some beautiful houses there, we'd hate to see them go. So anyway, we would.
And I think, I think you've identified one of the great challenges of, of redevelopment. And, and with redevelopment, with the investment of, of capital into an area, it, it generally raises values around the surrounding properties. That's the, that's the intent and the idea of encouraging redevelopment and so.
I wouldn't say though that it increases necessarily your safety, because
Right.
Those are houses that are no longer with families in them, who are kind of watching out for each other. And I, you know, so people, you know, there's a big homeless issue over there, and we all know that. We give them water bottles, so. But I do think that for anybody who tries to maintain their residence there, maybe it's their family home, maybe they've lived there for generations, as ours has. I mean, we go to lunch on Coburland every Sunday after church.
Yes.
So it concerns me that that would be a less safe environment for them, because there isn't, you know, there isn't that neighborhood feeling anymore and that ability to look after each other. So the attorney's office next door is not really going to have, they might have cameras, but that doesn't really help you when, if something happens in the night, so anyway.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Jamal Shumpert, single member district two. I know I can ask a question, but I was curious, if this is approved, would short-term rentals be required to maintain two off-site, I mean, two off-street parking spaces?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Different zoning.
Hello, good morning. Monica Ramos, Director of Downtown San Angelo. This central business district, I liked the first map with the purple boundary. When downtown San Angelo became a main street, or helped San Angelo become a main street city, that purple boundary is what we currently call today our main street boundaries between our downtown and historic and all the other zonings. And that is the whole future plan, is to one day create this main street to be the central business district. That's what the Texas Historical Commission and Main Street looked at when they did their studies to see what San Angelo could have as their future central business district. And right now, a good portion of that is complete, so expanding the central business district to be a part of that main street area is very beneficial. And as far as for the residents, it is going to be mixed in with commercial properties. However, having this expansion creates more amenities, it's more convenient to the neighborhood as well to have access to these businesses. And really, I think it's really going to help the small businesses that are already in this neighborhood and give them that thought that they can develop and create something that looks a lot nicer, that will in turn create something that is safer for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close public comment. The, as I'm sitting here, the only thing that, that might be useful to, I, I, well, let me start, what, do you, do you need a motion from us? Do you need a direction from us in order to move forward?
Yes, if this needs to go to the City Council, we do need your motion and vote as a recommendation for or against for it to move forward to City Council.
Okay. I think there, there are, in the, in the code of ordinances, there's a, a section that shows the various uses and what's allowed by use in zoning.
Yes, section 313 is our use table.
Okay, so that's very specific. It's good. It might be beneficial, and maybe this is for the City Council discussion, but I, I think it might be useful for everyone to, to see what's allowed in CBD zoning and what is allowed in some of these other zoning districts and where the overlap exists and where, where it doesn't, so that they can all understand the impact.
Yeah, city staff can certainly provide that as background information. Our principal planner, Sherri Bailey, did a great job at the public meeting. She had those handouts available as well as our information sheet. And so that was very, very helpful, but again, there's also other citizens that, as one of the citizens mentioned, couldn't make it, and so we want to make sure we get them that information as well.
Okay. I, I personally think that this is a, this is a, a good thing for, for downtown and I think expanding the, the zoning and broadening it is going to help encourage development and stability in the, in the areas that have been identified. Does anyone else want to share their thoughts or make a motion?
I, I think this is a good, good direction to go because it allows the different facets of zones in one area.
Broadened.
To be right beside each other as well, whereas
Yeah.
There's overlap right now of the wrong uses.
Yes.
And so this will help maintain that as well as facilitate it in the future if it comes across. I'll make a motion to approve as, as presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's five zero. Okay, conditional uses. Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council, CU 2407, 1528 Kenwood Drive. A request for conditional use for a short-term rental at 1528 Kenwood Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, this is a request for a short-term rental at 1528 Kenwood Drive. The owner in this case applied to the zoning board of adjustment for variance because it is 16 feet short of the 500 feet that the ordinance requires separating two short-term rentals. The owner did receive a six-zero vote on the variance approval, and so the next step is to bring it to you for a short-term rental request. It is a single-family zoning RS1 in District Five, Karen Hesse-Smith's district in the Santa Rita neighborhood. This is the present map that we have. It shows the applicant down in the lower right corner, the existing approved and operating are in green, and the others that are either in transition for blue but haven't been, they have no CO as of this time, and then two, the two red that were denied by this board fairly recently. We sent out 24 notices, we received one in favor, we did not receive any that were opposed that I am aware of.
Your map shows that there is one.
Oh, that's right. It came in and we added it. It's the one down at the bottom right-hand corner, about half of their lot is in the 200-foot notification area.
Okay.
And they were opposed to it, but they did not say why.
Okay.
Staff is recommending that it be approved since the variance was granted. I want to talk just a little bit about our first condition. These are the normal conditions that we present, but that first condition, we're asking that the, we're asking you to agree with staff that the applicant needs to provide us with a site plan that shows the two off-street parking spaces. They have two park, existing parking spaces on the lot. However, they're not totally on the lot, particularly the one, since it's a corner street property, the second parking space is really not at this point one that we can count. He has plenty of space on the existing lot, that, that parking space itself could enter the gated backyard, there is a gate right in front of that.
Do you have an aerial that you could show us what you're describing, Sheri?
I probably don't. But where it's located is this, right here.
Yes, ma'am.
This space right here.
That looks like a driveway.
Yeah, it's, it is a driveway, but there is, to the right of that, the gate is in the, the gated fencing that one could easily be put in the backyard and there's plenty of room to do it. We just need to make sure that we have those two parking spaces that would meet the requirement of the ordinance.
Okay, so just to clarify, if, if there's parking extending that driveway into the fenced area of the property, they've met the two parking space requirement?
Yeah, we've had some internal discussions about the, the existing one up here.
Yes.
And we've, we've handled it both ways. That's particularly wide right-of-way there.
Yes, it is.
Cuts the parking space in half.
It looks wider on their side of the street than it does on the other side of the street.
Yeah, we, yes, it does. We would like to see both parking spaces, if possible, put into that backyard, which would then not be a, a concern at all, but for sure, the one that's on Avenue L.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
The front of the house is on Kenwood.
Right, it's on Kenwood, yeah.
The left side.
Yeah, it's, it, it's a problem corner, because you're right, the right-of-way on both sides is exceptionally deep.
Yes.
It is.
We feel like city staff has a duty to ensure that we're meeting the ordinance. We're simply asking for where are you going to put your two parking spaces on your private property? If they're able to show that on a site plan, since there is a privacy fence there, we don't really have the authority to go in and, oh, and prove that there is. We're just giving the applicant that opportunity to prove to us that there is and so that they can continue to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. The other two conditions are our no, normal condition, receive the certificate of occupancy and get an annual fire inspection. With that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sheri.
Okay.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward and state your name and address or single member district.
Hello, my name is Katrina Fluger and we own 1513 Kenwood, which is just up the street on the opposite side. And is the, I have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. The part that's being opened up for rental, is it the entire space or is it just the part in the back? I'm a little confused on what the, what they're renting out.
This would be for the entire property.
The entire property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
And it looks like, based on the aerial photograph, there's this, there's a property that is perpendicular to this property that, that is the applicant that fronts on Avenue L. So the, the black, or excuse me, the, the red box that's delineated on this map is the boundaries of the short-term rental.
Okay, all right, so parking is terrible on that street?
Yes.
And say if they do include two parking spaces that are actually on the lot, are they limiting their VRB or whatever, the short-term rental people to two cars? I mean, yes, you offer two, but what if you rent it to 10 people? Are you going to have six cars show up?
I don't think they could rent it to 10 people. There's, what are the limits on occupancy? Can you guys, can the staff help with that?
Two adults per, per bedroom.
Okay.
Not knowing if this is a three-bedroom or four-bedroom, but they could have up to six, the minimum requirement, say two parking spaces.
Okay.
So you might have, you know, a lot of extra, and then, I don't know, I guess my question is if it does get rented out to large groups and the noise, those are just my concerns. It's a neighborhood and, anyway, I was one who did oppose, I don't know, I think she said I was out of the district, but I'm on that street, so.
Your, your address was on Kenwood though, right?
Yeah, 1513 Kenwood, so I'm not sure.
So the red star is not, would not be you.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see what she's saying, that that's where it came from. I thought, I guess I wasn't counted somehow, but I did oppose it.
It's on, you sent on Kenwood, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't receive one.
I mailed it in, anyway. But I came here to state my opinion.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming up. Okay, anyone else?
Once again, Doug Robinson. Yeah, it's my property. I'm a little confused on parking and, and the, the shop back in the back, that won't be rented out. It's a three-bedroom, so there won't be many people there. And I live on Kenwood, so.
Three-bedroom.
I just live down the street, but this is, I don't know what else to ask. I know it has like, I think it's, I can't remember what the driveway itself is, so I'm not sure why we're, it, does it, my parking have to be in the red space? Is that what it is?
It has to be on your property. And because the right-of-ways are so deep, particularly that one on Avenue L is totally in the city's.
Okay, so let me ask you this.
That's not a, it doesn't go to a, to a garage or anything, so it can't meet our standard.
Does that driveway, does that driveway extend into the property?
Yeah, it does, yeah, it's a carport back there, which is no big deal, but it's weird that I had to go to ZBA because I was, was within 500 feet.
Right.
But now you're saying, hey, well, we're not measuring that anymore, we're measuring the red for the property. You know what I mean?
No, we're just.
Oh, I don't know.
We're just requiring what we normally require, that you provide two parking, legitimate parking spaces. We're just saying that that one in particular is in the public right-of-way, which can't be counted.
You've been granted a variance.
Okay.
You were granted the variance for the, for the distance separation.
I was just confused on how all this was working, okay. All right, yeah, but yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I've got one underneath there and we've got one there, so we should be good.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's any questions or anything else.
Anyone have questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug.
All right.
Appreciate it. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion. Do we need to verify that there's a second parking space or is Doug's indication that there's a carport sufficient for you guys or, or do we?
Well, that, that is your decision.
I'm assuming that's going to be done after, if they don't meet the two-space requirement.
Well, currently, we do not go out in the field for a planning check after they've gotten their conditional use, unless there's a condition for us to go out there for. In this case, if they were to require, if you were to require the site plan, we would go out and make sure that the site is built as the site plan.
Okay, so we would need to ask you guys to verify that there are two parking spaces?
Yes. Now, we normally do that through photography and imaging and looking at garages and things like that, and so it's very intuitive, and then when they're out there on the site to take photographs, unfortunately, the second spot, we just couldn't see it through the fence.
I understand.
We, we fully believe there's one there, but
Okay.
Believing and seeing, I mean, it's just, we just want to make sure
Yep.
For our citizens.
Thank you. All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. Do you want to stipulate that the staff needs to verify the off-street?
Honestly, I feel like the staff has a lot going on and I do not want to add one more item to their plate. Doug obviously does a lot of STRs and he knows.
You're going to take Doug's work?
He knows the rules, so I'm going to say, Doug, if I drive by and you don't have parking space, I'm knocking on your door, no.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised at this time. time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address the dais, begin by stating their name and single-member district. Anyone wish to speak publicly on issues not on the agenda today? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Planning Directors report.
Good morning, Planning Commission, Aaron Vanoye, Planning Director of, Director of Planning and Development Services. Tomorrow, we do have our joint meeting with City Council for the short-term rental and bed and breakfast ordinance, for the first reading and hearing. It'll be a joint meeting. We will need at least five Planning Commissioners there. We believe we're gonna have at least six, so we're very excited about that. I do wanna just say thank you to Ray Lineberry and Brandon Dyson, who have been doing most of the heavy lifting of working on getting that ordinance revised. And there's been a lot of other staff input, citizen input, y'all's input, and City Council's input to come to an agreement of what we believe is going to work for our community. So, I'm very excited about tomorrow and bringing that ordinance forward for consideration. So, again, that's tomorrow at 8:30
8:30.
At McNeese Convention Center. For any of our citizens that are listening or concerned about short-term rentals, so we encourage citizen output. I was very encouraged by the central business district output that we had on Thursday night. Sherri Bailey did a great job of notifying the area. I also wanna commend our staff for, they're doing great on their notifications. You see that people are coming and starting to participate in the meetings, and we think that's critical. Whether they're for or against, we want them to participate, cuz the more citizens we have participating, the better our community's going to be. So, I appreciate that. The end of the month, the city staff is gonna go into a strategic planning meeting for just planners, and we're gonna be talking about what we're going to try to bring forward in the next few years. We know there are some big items out there, as we're bringing like central business district forward. There's potential for the comprehensive plan. There's other ideas of how do we assist with tiny homes and things like that? How do we find places in our community that works for continued development? So, we're very excited about that, so.
Okay, so 8:30 tomorrow morning, the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and City Council. Can everyone here make that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so the only one that's not in attendance tomorrow is Luke.
I believe that is correct, from our preliminary findings, yes.
Okay, and then, I don't see a next regular meeting of the Planning Commission on the, the agenda. Can you give me a date?
It is May 20th.
May 20th? Okay, so the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will take place on May 20th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in the same room at City Hall. And we've got the joint meeting tomorrow. Follow-up and administrative issues? Any other announcements or future agenda items? You guys all good? Okay, adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's five-zero, it's 10:36.